On the bid, did we require that? I mean, I can't think-
No.
I don't think it did.
Okay.
No, it was silent as to insurance.
Okay, so technically, in my opinion, we really can't
We can't force them.
Use that against anybody. I mean, we just have to know that if something happens and it's their fault, then it has to be-
Yeah, but I'm good for it. And I've got a long record. I've got lots of, you know, big clients that I'm responsible for a lot.
Well, that answers a lot, then. If it wasn't in there, in the bid, or required, then we can't necessarily use that against them, I don't think.
And it doesn't say state licensing and all that kind of stuff, does it? I can't remember.
I mean, they're-
In the bid, on the bid.
I don't think state licensing would really apply.
Apply under that. I can't remember how we ordered it.
It's got, I haven't stepped into our field yet.
But I'm sure they'll get there.
They'll get there eventually.
It's a matter of time.
And Kelprow, you guys know that that's to move us out and back. Move all the stuff back, relocate back here. And I know when we get back here, there's gonna be, we're actually changing some rooms in the courthouse. The district attorney's going upstairs from his office. The election board's gonna be in a different office and stuff. And I think at that time, we're gonna have to address relocation drop-wise, and we'll just have to do something to accommodate everybody, to make sure that they have what they need in the offices and stuff.
When your discussion, did you, the questions you asked Max is, are we comparing pretty well apples to apples here with everybody as far as?
We talked about the, what it was gonna cost, what it was gonna take to move, equipment-wise and stuff. And Tim said, you know, basically, the switches got to stay here because we can't move them.
So we would rather not use existing equipment, other than-
Right.
The things that they were talking about, which-
Right. And set up the equipment over there, even though it's gonna be temporary. And I know the question about, when you have that and you move back, what you're gonna do with that equipment and stuff. But we talked about that. We talked about insurance, about Penny's point about it being insured or not. And we kinda thought that it would be a good idea, even though it was stated in the deal that we do have insurance, would be a plus for us to cover us. And looking at that in a timely manner, about who could, how long it would take them to make the switch and stuff, having four people, techs onsite, and Scott, that again is not something against you being one person, but it is something for us to consider.
How many crews are gonna be moving the desks? That's logistically, you know, the move, we're thinking, you know, wiring's gonna, can be two to three people. The move is gonna be maybe two techs?
We're gonna open bids today for the movers that-
Okay.
In-house, moving.
Well, it's not really opening bids. There's, we're gonna review the contracts-
Review the contract.
Because they're statewide contracts.
Okay.
And we looked at several people off of the statewide contract and contacted them, and we've got response from two or three, and we're gonna go over that here later on in our agenda.
Okay.
So, can't really tell you outside. One group, I don't know. One group has done it many times and said it's not an issue.
The other guy never got back with me.
He never got back with you?
I contacted him twice and he never got back with me.
Okay.
And those are the only two on the state bid. But just FYI, if they do go with the one that did visit with me, he was saying May 15th, 16th, 17th, and possibly 18th to get all the stuff moved out.
To get all the stuff moved out here.
Because they're getting really filled up. It's a busy time of year for a lot of moving.
And they were gonna have four trucks and eight to 12 people to move stuff, and it was appealing, they was appealing that way, of having the manpower to do it, to get it done quickly, you know, stuff. But, you know, beans it, after looking at everything and talking to Tim and stuff and looking at this, I think I'd make a recommendation to accept Apprentice for the $19,345. I think they have insurance, that covers us there, which I know it was at bid, but that's a plus for us to have that. And being able to have more techs onsite to get it done in a timely manner, I think's a plus. But after looking at everything and having the cameras, deal included also, for $35.90 into the price of $19,345, it looks like they're the lowest and best bid for us to accept at this time, I believe.
I kinda feel the same way for everything that you said. I just wanna, I mean, I don't have a problem with any of that. I would like to note that we, you know, in the future on things like that, we should, we should include in our, in our bid packs that insurance-
Insurance.
Preferred. I mean, even if you put preferred.
Address it one way or another, whether it's required or not required.
I think, for other reasons other than the insurance, I think that that makes sense. But I don't think we, the insurance completely needs to be in consideration for why we-
I understand.
I think there's other reasons, like you're talking about, and I agree. But I think just note that the insurance, I mean, I don't-
It's not the whole deciding-
Right, it's not the whole enchilada, so.
Well, I felt, I feel the same way.
That being said, I will, I will move that we accept the Apprentice bid of $19,345.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
I appreciate everybody bidding-
Absolutely.
And taking the time, and we're new at this. There may be things we have overlooked and should've considered more. I apologize if that is the case. After seeing this and see it and looking through the others a little bit, I just felt like that this is the best choice for us at this time.
Thank you very much. I agree.
Yeah. Thank you. I guess we'll talk a little after the meeting or something. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank everybody for being here. I appreciate that. Let's, uh- Go back up to Stephen D.
Yeah. Stephen, do you have a, you have a busy day today?
I always have a busy day. But I'm here for you today. Since we've got all this move stuff going on, it's, it's gonna get crazier, 'cause once we start moving, that's when we'll find out we forgot-
Forgot something.
X, Y, Z.
Yeah, I just feel that we needed to do something today to get it rolling because-
I do too.
I mean, we needed to do that, and right or wrong, that was kinda-
Well, I would make a motion that we go back from item J back up to item D and blanket purchase orders.
Okay, I'll second that. 9:48?
10.
10:48. This is not Colorado time.
All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Do you need to sign the bottom of this as well?
No, no, just, if it's general government, if it's DC, sign up here and then sign this right here in the red. Don't sign the bottom or anything else.
But that's okay. Just one of you is, you're the only one signed down there.
Yeah, as long as there's just one signature on there, you're okay.
Okay. Fair enough.
Max, don't you wanna sign it?
Uh, I know. And I just thought-
I'm a little scared, dude.
Cindy's not here, and all them District Twos are gonna have to be signed by somebody.
Yeah.
Do we wanna go ahead and go on, and go on down the deal? We can sign these-
At the end?
At the end.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. I mean, we made the motion, I made the motion to approve blanket purchase orders.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Okay, item E, notice to bidder for the six-month bid list.
It's just that top page, but then that's the actual packet, too. Did I give you a packet?
This is just a packet that we normally do, that sends it out to everybody, inviting them to bid.
And just FYI, after talking to the examiners, if we can email stuff out, we're, so, the girls on Mindy and Jenna on Friday, Thursday and Friday, they called it practically, I think everyone on the vendor list-
Uh-huh.
-got email addresses, and we're gonna send them out by email, which will cost us postage, printing, because-
It'll save us.
It'll save us because, and then I can go back and print the email out, and the auditors are good with that as far as proving that email's valid.
So this is just a packet to send to the vendors on-
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, all that needs to be approved is that top copy, which goes to the newspaper for two weeks.
Okay.
And it just states what materials that we are going out for bid for.
Okay.
And it's, it's for the July 1st through December 31st, 2019 material.
We do it twice a year. And we go out and bid.
Yeah, I understand that.
And so, we will receive bids until 4:30 on Friday, May 17th, at the Grant County, in the clerk's office, and then they will be opened in the public meeting Monday, May 20th at 10:00 a.m. in the commissioner's meeting.
Okay. Well, I move that we accept the notice to bidder, 8-2019, six-month material bid.
I will second that. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Find that. There you go. Item F, change order number one, credit of unused contingency for $27,836.40 of Phase One for the courthouse and sheriff's renovation, provided by Kyler Construction Group and Ambler Architects. And this is just a paperwork for what they had brought forward? For change order number-
That's just taking the remaining contingency ballot out of Phase One and putting it into Phase Two.
Yeah, I remember them talking about that the other day.
Yeah.
All right. I move that we accept the change order for the credit of unused contingency, $27,836.40, Phase One of sheriff's renovation, provided by Kyler Construction Group and Ambler Architects.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Okay. Item G, determining movers for moving the furnishings of the courthouse relocation from the statewide bid, and as you had previously said-
This is the A1 Freeman, which is Atlas Van Line, and that, their bid is for the removing and bringing back of all of the furnishings and file cabinets and all that. There were only two on the statewide bid. It was A1 Freeman and its ACE movers, which is a David Howell. And I contacted Mr. Howell on the 21st of March. I emailed him, and then I emailed, or I left him a message on 4/24, and then he called me back and said he would call me back, and he never took, because their bid was really generic. And he told me he would call me back, and he never did call me back.
So this is to move everything and then move everything back, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And here's some references-
As far as furnishings and-
-to the A1 company as well.
Furnishings and all that kind of stuff.
And, and he did tell me this A1 said that they are the ones that, they have like a two-year contract with the state capital. They're the ones doing all the moving for the state capital.
I'm gonna get my shredder and a moving van.
Yeah.
I think a moving van-
They have them on wheels!
Woo! Put them together.
On the, on the bid for Atlas Van Lines, I know Rexanne was concerned about moving the file cabinets, because my understanding that the top two drawers have to be emptied.
If it's a five drawer.
Yeah, it was divorced from the four drawer. Or five drawers. And, and so, were there, were there bins in the bid to, for us to be available, or do we need to procure boxes, or what are we gonna do for the stuff that we have to take out of the house?
That's a good question.
We were told fourth floor has boxes.
Yes.
To put the files.
That's a good question.
That's what we were told, because I, I actually had looked at some that was, you know, the same-
Are you asking if that was in the bid for them, for the movers to do that particular stuff? Well, I guess it's right here.
No, I don't think-
It probably wasn't.
-they're gonna actually move, because for one thing, they're probably confidential files, so they necessarily aren't supposed to be touching them, right? Or not? I mean, they did-
I mean, we've gotta have someone move them.
Right.
I mean, I, I'll, I'll end up in the hospital otherwise, so.
No, it's my understanding that they're gonna move everything, but as far as having to unload the filing cabinet, I don't think you're gonna be provided with anything to-
Well, at one point in time, I was given a brochure and I had bins.
And they do have all of that stuff. This is what we were paid for.
That you could take the file cabinets and put them in the bins.
Guys, A1, they're, they're moving, they moved the state capital and the Guthrie School Systems, Elk City Schools, and Deer Creek Schools, so they're gonna have containers. But if they don't, we're gonna make sure that they bring-
Well, we understand that, but is, is that in on the bid for them to actually do that part, or are they gonna add, is that gonna be an extra cost? I think is what they're asking.
And we can get this gentleman on the phone-
Let's, let's call him and ask him, because-
I would think for that price, that would be included, but you don't know.
Yes.
Exactly, and then-
You don't wanna know.
I'm not.
Well, there's a, there's a price for moving out, a price for moving in, but the total is $57,000.
To do it all. Well, I mean, there's a lot to move, I understand that. I mean, there's a bunch to move.
There's a lot of liability.
Yes, probably half of that's insurance. I mean, really? That's a lot of liability, absolutely. Especially all the paperwork in here, if that's gonna be moved from the building. Maybe it's-
Oh, you have to have one slip to fall.
Maybe it's-
Adam Nevett.
Slide that over to the corner while we're working over here. Yeah, I-
Yeah.
Of course, the vault or anything like that's probably not gonna be affected, I would assume, but I don't know. See, they're big enough that they got a recording system.
Hi, this is Cindy Pratt, I'm the Grant County clerk. We're actually in our board meeting right now, and I tried to call Adam's direct line. Is he around today, or do you know? We had a question, I just needed to get clarification from him. He had given us a quote on a move, Adam Nevett. Okay. Um, I don't know, I'll just, is he gonna be back later? Okay, yeah, if you wanna, I'll just call back later, okay?
Ask her.
Oh, hold on, just-
Let me-
Hold on just a second. She's the receptionist lady, she's-
Yes, you're the receptionist, you don't, do you know anything about the departments and their, their general services that they provide?
It's a good question.
Uh, their coordinator? Yes, that would be fine.
Might be an extra five grand to do that.
Thank you.
I don't know. But there's a pretty good volume of stuff that's gonna have to move, you know?
Yeah. Um, hang on, it went to voicemail again.
Okay. Well, there's a packet over there, I just texted Mindy to, I'm gonna go, it has that stuff that I had shown Stephen, that shows where they have carts and stuff like that, it's just whether, hi, can you have Mindy come over? I just need to get a pack real quick, okay? I just need to come get some out of my office. Okay, thanks.
Well-
Well, if we, we might be able to-
I think that they're gonna have, guys-
I have no doubt they have it, it's just isn't gonna cost-
Cost us extra money, and we need to know that. You're thinking-
We're not going out for bid anyway, it's on the statewide, but we do need to know that, yes.
But that's probably something that's gonna have to be added in on the bid pack, I would imagine, or-
Well, I would think, if you bid like they did, and it's move in and move out, that's gonna be providing everything that it's gonna take to do that. So if it takes the-
You would like to think that.
Yeah, but you know, like in our office, where if we empty our filing cabinets, we have to put them in our own that we had to buy.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
I'm sure they got the ability to do it, and they have the containers, I'm sure they do, but-
But if it's included-
You gotta be specific, I mean, you do.
Well, I understand, and it's not spelled out in there, as far as I could see, that, that they would be responsible for providing that and keeping that separate. That's what we, we do need to clarify.
But as a concept for it, is there somebody that can, like, in the courthouse, that can move Steve Stevens? Steven Stevens, you know, two drawers or whatever, I don't know.
Well, and another thing, if they say that they're only gonna, they can move- See, it's got a list of boxes, tarps, dollies and everything else, but it doesn't say anything about-
There's containers right here.
The prices.
I don't think they're included in the bid.
Our bid specs do include it.
Why would they not?
Well, we didn't really have to go out for bid, because it's a statewide contract, yes.
Why would that not be included in their estimate? If they know that they have to move a five drawer-
I agree.
I mean, it might be, I don't know.
Five drawer cabinet, move all the files, and they have to be emptied.
Well, it shows you stickers and stuff and things, and I think, I think that this stuff, after reading this stuff here, that's gonna be included in it. I really do.
Well, I know they're gonna provide us, because I think they have like the carts and stuff like that, that they, these things like here.
Yeah.
This stuff here, like where they stack it on and then haul it out, but I mean, that's, like I said, they do this all the time, so.
Filing management.
Um, crates, crates. Moving logistics equipment.
Have you tried this, this-
Roll tape, plating, packaging.
He retired.
He retired.
It's like he came down, he's the one who came down and assessed everything, and then he retired.
So this number here wouldn't get-
You scared him that much.
I don't know, you might try.
Do I?
You can try it, I don't know.
Basic cargo protection included.
You can look at that, too.
Are we dialing the same number?
I'm dialing Jerry Goodson.
It's like you're calling the other one.
Jerry Goodson, is not available. Record your message at the tone when you-
Where are you at? Any questions? Adam, this is Cindy Pratt, Grant County. If you could give me a call back, we have questions about containers and things like that, to be emptying out the top, the top drawers on the file cabinets, so if you could give me a call back. Thank you. 580-395-2274.
Well, basically-
Well, I hear it says on here that they're, they provide all of that, in, on here, that's there.
On their letter.
Mm-hmm. On, it's right here, moving logistics equipment, packing paper, moving labels, all this is a total of $343.88, which, moving cartons, lot, bottom moving cartons, library carts, it's in here.
No, that's ACE, that's a different, that's a different one.
But you said we only had one of them that was-
Well, ACE had sent me one, but it wasn't broke out very much, and so I called the guy back, because he, he had it down as one truck and one man, well, there's no way-
Right, well, ACE does-
So ACE is different. A1, they're both Atlas Van Line.
This is 3506, and that is three drivers, two trucks, one crew van, seven movers to relocate, ten offices, but that's only one way. And that did include all your packing crates.
And that was the gentleman I tried to, the David Howell, that I called and asked, I said, I don't think we're really comparing apples to apples, and then I called him and he never moved back.
Okay. So that bid is separate from this bid that we're looking at here?
Well, they're not really bids.
Or-
Yeah, I just-
Off of the state bid.
Right.
Well, this and here is got, what, $24,000?
For return and like $21,000.
$21,600 to move out, furniture removal. They got $24,492 for return. And it's got it, it's got it spelled out in hours, three units, three moving vans, and 12 units is, and it's got the labor costs broke out. I don't know why.
Twelve people, it's like.
Yeah.
If that is 12 units, I think that is labor, so that'd be 12 people. I mean, you're definitely getting-
And they actually came onsite and took pictures of everything, so I mean, they're-
So this is basically an idea of what, we're getting an idea of what they charge, this isn't, they're not bidding.
It's not, no, we're not bidding because we don't have to be.
So what are we, what are we doing today?
We need to decide, though, if they're, if, you know, are we going to use them, because we have to book it with them, because if not, the longer we wait, the less chance of us being able to get them, either whoever booked, because it's just a busy time of year.
Looks like we've only got this, this choice here. If nobody else replied, this is the only one that we've got to pick from. It is off of the state bid, it's already been bid.
Oh, and just FYI, I had, earlier on, when we first started talking about this, I had contacted a third moving company out in it, and they said it was too big of a job for them. So I did attempt contacting more than-
Sounds like logistically, this is the only one we got.
And I contacted two men and a brother, and they're out of line.
That's only three guys.
And they're not on state contract. I always say two men and a brother, two mi, what is it? Two men and a brother.
Well, that's only, that's only two guys.
That's three people.
Oh, yeah, we don't want them.
And my cousin, Daryl.
And Daryl's not here, so it's gonna be us two. All right. Um, if that's what we need to do, it's already been on state bid, we, we do have that question. I would, I would tend to agree that it's there, that's part of it, and that, you know, like I said, they've moved all these places before, I'm sure that it's there.
I guess I just need to, I mean, I can check further, but I do need to make sure-
It isn't the boxes, it's if they're gonna charge us extra to remove those. And you would think that's part of it.
It's all, it's not all an hourly thing, I think that's part of it. My concern is the, I think they charge for the rental of those containers, and I don't think that's in the bid, but as far as moving everything out, that's all included.
And all this is a timely thing, I mean, we don't have a lot of choice.
Stephen, when was you planning on?
Well, I mean, when I had talked with Cindy Bobbitt, she wanted us to move on May 1st.
Okay, now that you say that, I'm glad, I, when I talked to Adam Nevett from this A1, I told him, and that would've been like Thursday of last week, I think, maybe, I said, now the DA is wanting to move sooner, is that a possibility? And he said, yes, we could probably send someone up to get him moved in ahead of time.
But, I mean, I, I need, you know, I can't do, I can't move on Mondays or-
Right.
Tuesdays.
And May 1st is like-
You know, I don't have to move on May 1st, I can move another time, but I need, I need to get it scheduled, so I know when it is. But I need, I need to get it scheduled so I know when it is. And I need to know whether I've gotta get, line up my own boxes or whether the, they're going to provide bins for the files.
I would just, we'll just assume and if it's extra, then we're gonna have to absorb that because there's no sense in you guys going out and finding your own boxes.
Well, Penny said.
I had to.
We had boxes and we've got boxes upstairs. And if we have to get the boxes and they're, they're a moving company, so they're gonna move the files. It's not gonna be up to you to have to move them. So whether we use their boxes or they use our boxes, they're gonna be doing it. We just gotta accept this as.
To get them booked.
To get them booked.
Yes.
And pick a date that you wanna get moved and say, let's get here.
The, the main thing is getting them booked.
Can I coordinate with Steven and, and Adam, uh, from A1? And we'll see what works best to get him moved and then, um, and then I'll tell him to go ahead and get us on, hit their schedule. He said if I let him know today, cause he had told me, May fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth and the eighteenth if need be. And he said they'd come up on the fourteenth and they would at the latest wrap it up on the eighteenth.
Okay.
Since this was on state bid, I guess we need a motion?
May fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, but Steven, if you.
That would probably work for our office as well.
Would it? Okay.
Well, we'll just, if that's the case, then we just have them do you first. Move you first.
Another thing while we're on the subject, so it doesn't come up when apprentice shows up to do that, we need to make sure the landlord's okay with us adding additional cabling to your office.
Yeah, I've got, yeah, we need to get ahold of him and make sure before we.
I don't want him to go in there and we still have nothing.
I think I talked to Darren about that.
I gotcha.
Yeah, but we need, we need something in writing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we wanna, we, we need something in writing that it's okay.
Okay, are you gonna write something, Steven, to, for them, to him about putting more cabling in or do you want Cindy?
Cindy could get ahold of him and.
And then I can just.
Just let me know and then we could, we can, I, if he doesn't wanna write something, I can write something, a letter for him to sign.
I think he might be on it. It's supposed to be on the case.
That'll be for something on the roof as well and then cabling in the building.
Okay. So Cindy will take care of that. So that being said, uh, we need a motion to go ahead and proceed with A1 Freeman.
Okay. I move that, um, we accept, uh, the state bid of, uh, A1, Adam Nevett for, uh, fifty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
I will second that. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
And you'll work with Steven and get the letter and get contacted up there. That'd be great.
Yep.
I ask some of these numbers.
Yes.
Um, the furniture that is in my office was built inside my office because it's too big for the door. So are they gonna take my, or is that something I have to hire somebody else?
We bought him an electric planer and you'll have to trim that up.
Thanks.
Um, now that, that, I don't know how to answer that question.
I would say, uh.
Did, were they aware of that when they come up?
Well, I told the guy that came around, but I haven't talked, I haven't seen anybody else.
Okay.
And I guess he's not one that's, um.
He's retired evidently.
He's still gets the heck out.
Yeah, evidently he retired and somebody else, but that's another question we need to ask this Adam.
Well, that might be something that they cover that too.
Other windows wire.
Yeah.
You have to take a chair and break the window.
Well, that might be something else that can be preserved in place as well. I don't know, but I mean, sure. I mean, absolutely, we'll have to do that. I mean.
So how many pieces do you have that's bigger?
It's mainly the big desks. Uh, there's two big desks. And then there's the one that has kind of a half circle to it. They all were built within, in fact, all the furniture was built within the office. But I think that the other, the, like the hutch thing and the credenza will go through the door, okay? But the other, the other stuff.
That will just definitely have to be a question for the movers and then if, I mean, they may have alternative things they can do with that as far, I don't know. That's a good question, Al.
Well, we took that stuff out of Debbie's office with a chainsaw, didn't we? I think we need to make sure that we write that in our policy that we don't have any thing that's too big for the doorway.
I think, I think.
That's retarded.
Why?
No, because our doorways are not even handicap accessible.
Gotcha. That right?
No, they, 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 the, the, the architects were, were in there and, uh, they, they, we, what, Penny was there, they discussed her doorway and there's no way to fix her doorway.
No way to make it wider.
Cindy, when you.
Cause of the side deal, isn't it?
Cindy, when you speak with Adam.
Yes, I'm gonna ask about disneying her body.
Because.
We better.
And, or absolutely, we're not.
But.
But I would think they'd take, have to take furniture apart.
They probably had to take it apart. Is it bolted together? Okay.
I'm sure they just have to take it.
But, but really, that, that, that needs to be addressed.
Well, that'll be something that they may not be aware of and they may be aware of if you talk to.
The other guy I saw, I told him and he said it wasn't a problem for him, but he's not.
If he's, if he's not there now.
Sure, it's not a problem. He knew he was leaving. This won't be a problem for me. But yes, I mean, that's, yeah, that's a good question as well.
Okay, take desks apart. Gotcha. Okay, that takes care of item G. Excuse me. Item H, contract for internet services with encounter for the Grant County Expo Center.
I have something on that max.
Okay, what's that?
Do you know what your internet speed is at your shop?
Am I?
Yes.
Really bad. Um, I, I, I don't have the, uh, by no means, it's probably, as far as what Pioneer offers, it's probably about the middle of the road, uh.
Yeah.
Give me some examples of.
Well, if you update yours, you, no more than, I realize OSU's moving to the fairgrounds, but after that, there'd be no way in the building. Yours could be microwaved to there and then you don't have to pay for both. You could split, split that.
Mine, I mean, I can, outside of my building, you can pick it up, but just really close.
Well, right, but you can put in the device that goes, I mean, it's a clear shot from your shop to the, I'm not saying that's a suggestion, instead of paying the, another ISP for that.
Right.
Either way, however you wanna do that.
Right.
Okay, the OSU extension is moving to the fairgrounds temporarily and then they'll be back up here. But that makes sense to eliminate.
I think you'll have internet there whenever you have a, some kind of a bid there, it, it, internet.
Yeah.
I think that's an enhancement anyway on that deal.
Well, I do too, and I think if you can get it off of them.
I mean, security, I mean, you know, if you've got vendors and stuff coming in for that internet, you'd probably want that separate from your internet.
And then.
Well, that can be done. I mean, that can be done through the router.
The router, yeah.
You don't have to put a router. Either you can leave the router there or put another one in the, in there. I mean, I'm just saying it's an option. If you, it doesn't matter to me.
That's something to me, be kinda considered though, if, if that's something we would wanna leave there on a permanent basis.
Well, I would've thought you wanna leave it there anyway, because they're gonna have present, you know, they'll have training and all that stuff.
I see the temporary deal, absolutely. I am all about that, but if, that might be something you want there all the time.
That's something that we'll only have to talk to them about later, but, which can be. All we're doing is deciding about putting it there, an agreement to the fairgrounds now. So District Three would have to talk to the Fair Board about putting a router in there and routing it over there, but.
And then they could split the cost.
Their first question is gonna be, well, when that's there, are we gonna be paying for it from them?
Well, we can split it where you pay half and they pay half.
Well, but when she's gone, they'll probably say, well, who's gonna pay for that? That's gonna be the first thing.
Well, once she's gone, then it's back on the Fair Board, I would think.
I mean, that's, that's what they're gonna ask, trust me. You need to, yeah, you need to get something.
Well, I guess my point in that is, is that you're not, if you do it in your shop, you're not adding any additional expense. I mean, you have to pay for your internet whether Fair Board uses it or not.
Right.
And that's a decision you'll have to make if you wanna split the cost or if you wanna let them have your internet.
Right. That, yeah, I mean, that is, that's, yeah.
And you don't have to pay fifty, sixty, eighty dollars for encounters for the twelve months of OSU's there.
I got you. That's something that can be worked out. I mean.
In the future.
Yes.
Well, installation fee is a hundred and forty-nine dollars. The terms of the agreement are for one year. And like Tim pointed out, the monthly fee is eighty-eight dollars a month. Do you, do you wanna talk to them about going ahead and, and doing something with your shop? Now?
Cause it may be, yeah.
I say, once you get it installed, go ahead and start splitting. I mean, if you can do that.
Um. Yeah, I mean, I can, I can, I'll, I'll, I'll do that. I mean, that's, that's, that's a great option there.
Well, Phil's already signed it and Steven's looked at it, the contract, but I don't know whether it'd be, I don't know how much it, does your internet cost yet?
Is that from just, uh, is that for putting it in there on, on its own and not talking about what Tim's doing? That's just if they went in there and put their own router in there. Well, we probably, I mean, I know we're gonna need it pretty quick, but I, I can find out as well as today and we can table that till Monday, probably.
They keep hitting me up about it.
Well, I'm sure they will.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying.
And that's, that's, that's great, but what I'm saying is instead of putting that in, we may wanna look into what Tim's saying.
Yeah.
Instead of accepting that right away. We can, I, I, I motion that we, that we table that until, uh, until the next Monday's meeting and by then I'll find out.
Okay. Table till Monday.
Do you wanna second?
I second that. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye. And we're not trying to push you in any.
Oh, no, 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 no. I, I think Tim's idea was good. I was, um.
That's excellent, sir.
That, that can just be, that's what I'm saying. I don't think we need to accept that if we're gonna try something else.
Yeah, I think that's better. Okay, that's great. Okay, uh, that brings it down to Adam. I, courthouse renovations and relocation.
I think that's just on there if we have anything.
Yeah, I just wanted to kinda mention, I did, um, um, I did, just a couple of things I'm thinking about on the portable buildings. Do we have to have ADA accessibility?
Um.
On a temporary location?
Probably technically, yes.
So we need to see about getting one of those built as a ramp? I don't know. I mean, I'm just.
Well, we'll have to put something in versus the stairs, I, I would assume if it's ADA compliant.
You're gonna have to do a ramp. At least on one of them, I would assume, and then anything.
Something else I thought about was, um, you know, would it be in storm season? We need to make sure we have a tornado drill or, you know, make sure we all know what our plan is in the event of bad weather. I don't know. That's what we need to figure out.
If it's a trailer house, it's gonna get hit.
Get, it's run like hell. That's what it is. And these were just things I've been thinking about.
Do they have, uh, storm, storm shelters over there in that area?
No.
Robin Harret has one in her backyard. That's the best one I know.
That's, that's definitely something that needs to be considered. I mean, I know get the heck out of that trailer, but.
What does Cindy have for her shop?
I don't know.
Cindy's got a storm shelter.
Yes, she does. Yes, she does.
Yeah.
Does people normally go to the school up here still?
Or the Catholic Church.
If we're gonna go to Cindy's shop, why not go to what we have prepared?
We can.
Yeah, it'd be close.
Be just as close.
And have, be able to house everything.
You know, does, I don't know what the other districts have it or not, but we've got that portable storm shelter. Or it's a storm shelter that's been set by my shop down there.
Yeah.
Of course, I guess if you take that away and, and, and nobody's ever used it, it's been the, something like that. Yeah, it's supposed to be for everybody, but nobody, I was told by my guys, nobody's ever, nobody's ever used it. It's not even.
Over at Walt.
That was, that was the deal, but what I'm saying is, um, perhaps, I mean, it'll hold quite a few people, perhaps.
But moving it would be a challenge.
Oh, no, you can't, you can't afford to move them.
Yeah.
Uh, this last deal over here, when we moved them, when the Dollar General wanted, that cost us.
Definitely need to just have a plan in place of wherever it is you go. You just need to let people know that's what you do. Like my, my restaurant, I said, see y'all. They're get out. No, actually, we have a plan, you know, the school provides places and I, I get them out and say, you, you need to get there.
The other thing I was, I mean, it needs to be nailed down, who's gonna be in what building? So we can kinda start figuring out what we need to do with the buildings. I have also kinda talked to the electrician and the, um, I've contacted, I, I've been visiting with Max, so I didn't just take this on myself. I've been talking with Max and so I went ahead and contacted, uh, different electricians. Let's see. Luck and Bill came up and looked about hooking the trailers to the electrical pole. Also plumbing about getting, I've contacted plumbers about getting quotes on what they charge us to put the toilets in and getting the bathrooms back up to speed. We need to see about getting the doors on the bathrooms. And then discussion on, you know, is Scott gonna go over and kinda clean up those buildings? If so, I'd like to kinda see maybe shampoo, rinse the shampoo or.
I think so, absolutely. I think, I think, oh, I know there's direction needed here.
Yes.
But I think that if there's a way to do it where, where the people that are gonna be in there need to have a say in it too.
Right, that's why I'm saying it needs to be determined who's gonna, you know, there's two different buildings.
Well, I think if you put, like we put the county commissioners and the emergency manager in one end of a building and we put, uh, the county clerk, uh, in the other half and then building two or one or whichever way you wanna say it, put the treasurer in one end and the assessor in the other end, like that.
Where's the election board going?
I would say that the election board is kinda small space. We may have to, uh, they've been with the assessors slash deal. Maybe we could try to fit him in there.
That's, that's what I'm saying is you guys, I mean, a little, I mean, input wise would be awesome.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, and then put the county commissioners and the emergency manager and in one end and, and the county clerk in the other end.
That would work for me.
I mean, and that's what I'm saying. You, I mean, yes, that's, that's all good ideas, but far be it for me to say this is where you're gonna be and where you're gonna be and where you're gonna be. I think what Max is saying is good and you guys have input in that of where, you know, like at one end and, and things like that. I mean, yeah.
We do.
I think so. I, I, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, but you guys are also looking for, and I think what Max said is, is good. I mean, if you guys agree with that, then you can kinda go from there.
Well, we have to have some direction to give everybody else.
Well, there'll be a free for all. Oh, I get this office, I get this office. But if you have positionings in there for the treasurer.
Basically the same size rooms, which they're bigger than what we have current. They all, they all have cabinets, but just some cabinets are different than other cabinets. Yeah.
Locating your space and figuring out.
That's what I mean. I mean, you guys say, okay, I mean, you should pretty much kinda fall in line with what you're doing now. But just.
So which offices needs the most cabinet space?
See, that's hard to determine. That's something you guys.
It's all, it's all an opinion, you know, but.
If we're gonna bump up your assessors, I think they would need more cabinet space than we would. We've got smaller filing cabinets and if we can still have access to the courthouse on a once a week basis, any files that we would need could be waited on and come in and get what we need. But I would think they would, but Robin, I think Robin's here.
Well, I mean, like we're gonna have to take several of it. We're not taking all the books out of the vault, but we are gonna have to take certain books out of the vault and stuff like that. Do you have to take much out of your vault with you?
I don't have to take much at all out of the vault.
Well, I think when we originally talked about that, we was gonna use the vaults to house some stuff, which if we do the buildings, we're gonna have to have the filing cabinets and as much of that stuff to, for.
Are they not gonna be in our vaults doing painting and whatnot?
They are going to be doing some, but, but, but yes and no. I don't know. Cindy met with them about that on the first phase before I become chairman, so I can't tell you.
That, I mean, that's gonna be.
How much that they're gonna do.
I wouldn't think they, I wouldn't think that they would do a lot with that.
I think they were just gonna paint like where they can't. They're not moving stuff around in the vault.
I don't see why, I don't see why you'd even mess with it.
I thank you. I agree with him.
That is, no, seriously, why would you?
Well, I don't know why.
I mean.
Unless, because.
There's not anybody other than a few people that go in there. It's not like it's a showpiece for everybody to see.
They're gonna paint around the books.
I don't, I don't. I don't, I don't see
Not a good way to paint anywhere.
I don't, I, that's my opinion. I s, I don't see even messing with it.
Well, I had heard at one time that they weren't gonna do anything in the vault.
I wouldn't.
That's not what I was told.
That's not what I
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it. I
Well, I, I'm with you. It doesn't bother me a bit whether they mess with the vault. It saves the county not to have to mess with the vault. I mean, we have act, people in our vault, but it's because that's where the records are, but
Guys, I mean, if there, if stuff's in a vault, it's very sensitive material usually.
I asked them not to come into the vault.
If you would, absolutely, I don't see why you'd wanna jack with that paperwork.
Well, take the chance of ruining it.
And, and painting around it.
In there from County L. I know you do too.
Pound, pound, painting around them. Why, I would, I would, in my opinion, I would say, don't. Just leave it alone.
Really, then I think that needs to come up maybe next week again, whenever.
I'll have the, I'll have the same opinion then as well. No, I mean, guys, that's, that's common sense to me.
Either do it right or no.
Oh, my gosh, I, I think you, I think you almost, I think you almost have a, a special company to come in and, yeah, either you're gonna move it in, or don't mess with it, move it out, or don't mess with all. And how much is it gonna cost to move that sensitive material?
And like Max said, if there was anything then that we needed, in the vault we could.
I agree.
With no worries.
I mean, gosh.
Yeah.
That's a whole nother
Oh, the only other thing I thought is I did, I need, I'm gonna call down to, uh, Cornforth, but about rekeying the buildings. You know, so like, you'll have a key just to your section, and then
Oh, the traverses.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, so
He would be good to do that.
Yeah, but you're not gonna have, you're gonna have a building, if you have, you're gonna have a keys to building one or keys to building two.
Well, I think there's a
There are partitions?
Not a wall, it's
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to remember.
I don't think so. There's not a petition wall.
Little So, yeah, I guess it'd be one and two, and then, yeah, you'd have to use your file cabinet.
And, you know, like you said about the treasurers, uh, or the assessors had, need more space, you know, than you would need, probably they would need more
Cabinet space.
Cabinet space. You know, that way you could pick the ends of the building, which has more space, and we as commissioners wouldn't need as much as the clerk's office, so let's take, we would take the lesser end there and stuff.
At least I'll work together.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can do that. I mean, I do. Absolutely.
And something was said about signs.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, about a sign. Uh, we could just get a general generic sign, put up temporary relocation of Grant County courthouse offices. And put out front down there.
They are.
Yeah, well, it, do you wanna make one for each one on the door?
But I just know he won't be with us, and neither will Dina.
Right, and Steven, do you wanna sign on your, to put up there at the office, which will be another thing we'd have to ask?
I think we'll just, you know, do a word document, cause it's a glass window there, District Attorney's Office is taped at the front. It's just temporary.
That's a pretty good idea.
That, I like that idea.
You can even laminate it if you want.
Probably we'll do something like that. Maybe, I haven't talked to the judge, I don't know what he's gonna wanna put
We'll have legal thing?
Cindy's shop.
So, um, we, he, they were gonna do a map, hand it out to everybody uh, on the docket, May docket, as this is where we're gonna meet.
Okay.
And, um, so, um, probably need, you know, some sort of general sign that says, you know, courthouse closed, call this number.
Yeah, I mean, sure.
Then they can just call the number, and you can tell them, well, DA's office here, this person's here.
And that's for here that we'll need that. Uh, we can put them up in the, I don't know, we oughta post a sign out by the sidewalk, end of the sidewalks, or whether put them on the doors or both. Probably do both.
You probably, yeah, and then you might also wanna make sure you get something in the newspaper.
Yes, we definitely will have to have
A lot of that, you're gonna find as you go along, and as it, that you're gonna say, whoa, well, maybe we need to do this, maybe we I think it just should be, yeah.
Try to think of everything we can before.
Sure, but you can't. I mean, you'll have something. And that's okay.
There's gonna be things come up.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Like Steven said.
Back on the, the trailers, there is a petition wall that separates all of the, the office with a doorway. Each room has a small room that you could probably put a bathroom in each side of that office, just one building. They've got a small room in there. Each room's got a cabinet, and each room's got its own breaker box.
That wall, though, is it, is there capability to put a door there to where you could actually like, you see what I'm saying? Make it two separate offices that are secure.
Doors. One door goes into one room, this door goes into this room.
I'm trying to remember, and was there a wall in between the two?
Yes, there's a wall in between with the doorway that allow you to walk in between each offices. So like So if you put the commissioners in there, the commissioners would be able to enter the, uh, from the outside, but still be able to walk over to the county clerk's office while inside the building.
So let me ask you this, it's not, not a hallway. It's just
No, it's not.
It's just a wall with a do, with a doorway.
When you open up that middle door to go through there, you're gonna be walking through somebody's office.
Right, you're gonna be walking into the next office.
Well, I mean, it is what it is.
So. But there is, there is a wall. I mean, you, there's a door there, I think, or where you can install a door and close it off where they'll have their own
If we can get together
Whatever they need to do.
By the building here.
Yeah, okay, see, like, this is, there is a wall.
When I was over this morning, each office has its own
Okay, that's your center.
Yeah, and then
Well, that's cool.
They won't have one
The only way you get through it is through the bathroom.
Imagine, didn't they, didn't they use them as classrooms?
They could have a bathroom.
Yes, each, uh, each office has some, uh, cabinetry in it, some towers.
One bathroom.
And each office, like you said, has a smaller room. About the size
Yes, they are separated.
I think
Let's keep our fingers crossed that they can get